October 29th at 6:00 PM. We'll start with roll call.
Reed Campbell.
Here.
Tom Haglund.
Here.
Sue Kern.
Here.
Ruth Nelson.
Here.
Bob Nystrom.
Here.
Chris Robinson. Five of the six present.
Okay, thank you. We'll do the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first on our agenda is the approval of the agenda as amended, and we do have a couple of amendments. The first amendment would be to pull policy 525 under the four action number four item. And it won't, it's already off of your.
Yeah, it's off of the agenda. It was on, it was on your agenda on Friday.
And it was published in the paper. Then the second thing is to add four additional photos for new business. Number one, when we talk about the location and layout for the elementary in Baxter and Noelwood Drive options. So there'll be four additional photos available, and they're available in the packet, too.
Right.
Madam Chair, I'd like to add something to the amendment.
Okay.
Or I would like to ask the board to consider having a joint meeting with the Brainerd City Council. In recent days, we have heard that the city is looking at a moratorium on any structures being torn down in the city of Brainerd.
Okay.
Which would impact our building project, and I would like to ask for this meeting in order to see if there could be a pause on their part, on their vote on this, that we could discuss property acquisition and also a process of what houses could be identified where the city could be more involved with us.
Okay.
In this, more as a partner with us.
So if I add a sixth for action item under the four action, property acquisition, working with city, and we'll talk about it there. So number six.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And note that Chris Robinson is now here in attendance, too.
Okay.
So.
The extended trips, do you need to put that in? Addressed, or can we just talk about that during consent?
I think we can talk about that, yeah. Perfect, okay.
No, they're added, though, from Friday's.
Oh, they are?
Yep, they are.
Okay. And then the other amendment would be, under the consent calendar, we have extended, we have an additional extended field trip request. So there's four amendments to the agenda.
Okay.
Yep.
I so move approval of the agenda with the amendments.
Thank you. Director Campbell? Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Director Haglund. Any further discussion? All in favor of the approval of the agenda with the four amendments, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, and we will proceed. Before we get into property or district recognition, I would just like to mention that initially at this meeting, we were going to talk about property acquisition and possibly finalize it, and as people are aware, that's been put on hold. And the reason for that is, over the past week, inquiries regarding property acquisition at Brainerd High School, Harrison, Lowell, and Garfield Elementary have come to our attention. And to ensure that every question community members are asking have been addressed, we are postponing the property acquisition decision scheduled for Monday's board meeting. We want to align with city leaders on our direction moving forward. And also, I just wanted to add to that, I had the opportunity to talk to two city council members in the past week, and we've had good conversation, and I think there's a lot of good work we can do together. The district will take the time needed to get this decision right, as it is in the best interest of our community for the next 50 years.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, we have district recognitions, and I'll turn it over to Superintendent Larson.
Perfect. I have a couple of recognitions tonight. First of all, congratulations to Gabe Jugish, seventh grader at Forestview Middle School. He finished first place in the Junior Freestyle Worlds Finals in Lake Havasu City, Arizona. Gabe was one of three students from around the world to qualify and then compete in the International Jet Ski Boating Association World Finals. So congratulations to him. Very wonderful. Also, congratulations to June Delgren, our early childhood special education teacher, for being selected as the Distinguished Educator of the Year by the Brainerd J.C.'s. She was honored Thursday, October 25th, 2018, along with other distinguished service award winners. And I know there were a couple of board members that were there. It was just really an honor to see the high-quality contributions that so many people have made to our community. And so, congratulations to June and to all the recipients at the Distinguished Service Award Dinner.
Okay, wonderful. Good recognitions. Okay, next on our agenda is the public input. And just to remind our audience that if you are planning to address an issue during this portion of our meeting, we welcome your comments. We must comply with Board Policy 206, and the following limitations will apply. We'll enforce a three-minute limit on each person speaking during the public comment session. Complaints or allegations against students or employees may not be discussed due to data privacy. Those should be submitted in writing to Superintendent Larson, and there'll be no verbal interaction or question answer with the Board of Education or the Superintendent of Schools. So as some, if someone wants to come forward, if anyone has something to talk, go right ahead, and I also have a handwritten note that someone requested we read at the public meeting. So. Come on up and please state your name.
My name's Carol Pachelki.
You can sit. Sorry, yeah. We like to hear you.
Oh, this feels really awkward. Being in the principal's office. My name's Carol Pachelki. Some of you probably know me more from my job. I'm the Family Services Director at the Salvation Army. But my house is one of the houses next to Harrison that is slated to be demolished, I guess, for lack of a better word. And I will tell you the truth, when I first heard, I cried a whole bunch. I threw a fit. I might have uttered some expletives. Because I was shocked, and I've lived there for a long time, and I love my home, and I love my neighborhood, and it's very convenient for a number of things. And then, and I was kind of mad that I didn't know before we voted, and now I'm not. Because had I known before we voted, I wonder if my own personal feelings and selfishness may have had a play in how I would have voted. Am I voting for my own personal, what I want, or am I voting for the well-being of the kids in this community and the students, many of whom I serve through my programs? And of course, I have children here and will undoubtedly have grandchildren in this school district. And so then I thought, well, maybe I'm glad I didn't know, because my emotions would have gotten the better of me. And so I kind of had to sit on it for a while. And I'm still a little nervous, because I don't want to get, I don't want my situation to end up worse than it is now. And, and I have to have some comfort in that, although I will say who, the people that you've employed to facilitate this have given me some confidence that, you know, I'm, nobody's out to, you know, oust me and me end up being the only person serving homeless people in Brainerd that can't get a hotel voucher myself. That would be dreadful. And I am a little worried now that there's a whole bunch of concern about it moving forward, just because, yes, we have a housing problem in Brainerd. We don't have enough housing. We also have some things in the works through other agencies and other things that you guys may or may not be aware of, the city of Brainerd may or may not be aware of, in terms of increasing the number of rental units and housing available that may mitigate some of those concerns based on the number of housing units being gotten rid of and the number of available spaces. So I look at things a little bit big picture, and I would not want my selfishness about keeping my home and things the way I want to end up meaning there's not enough safe parking and traffic movement around that school building, and then find something has gone wrong and somebody's been harmed because there wasn't something in place. We were more worried about preserving some houses and preserving the lives of the children in that neighborhood. And that just really concerns me, and I, when this moves forward, and I may or may not be free, I'm always on call, and things go crazy. May not be here when the school board is, but feel free to express my concerns that houses are houses and people are people. And we need to look at the big picture and make sure that, that our decisions are motivated on what's best for the kids in those communities and their safety and what's going to be best. I mean, if we do something that we have to redo in 20 years, are we any better off? Or have we just made a bigger mess and hopefully can get a levy passed again? I fought for the first levy and it didn't pass, and I was so mad. I was running a preschool at that time, and I sent home letters to everyone trying to convince them that it was important, and I was not happy with the changes that had to happen when that levy didn't pass. So I, I just want to say, I was really mad when I heard, and I was upset, and I cried, because I was like, this is my home. But this is also my community, and I do care about the kids and the future of the community as much as I care about myself. And I have confidence that I'm not going to get, you know, turned out in the street or anything like that. So that being my big fear, given my job, I want to make sure that the kids are safe in whatever plan they, they have moving forward. And if saving a few houses is going to mean an unsafe condition for the kids, that's not okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Oh, yes. Carol, will you please fill out a card? That should be over in that.
I did.
You did. Okay, wonderful. Thank you so much.
She's got it. She's got it. Thank you.
Okay, and then I'll, is there anyone else that wants to speak before I? No one else? Okay. This letter is from Dave Felsky and Corey Felsky from Oak Ridge Homes and Support Services. Dear School Board Members, we met with Natalie from ICS Consulting last week to discuss the project that the Brainerd School Board and School District Team have been working on. As one of the property owners that the school district is looking to acquire for use around the high school, we want you to know that even though the project has been postponed, we are in full support of the proposed project. We understand the safety issues surrounding the current high school parking situation, the need for more parking to accommodate the new Performing Arts Center and the growing class sizes. We also understand that the people in our communities voted for the referendum in order to accomplish these goals. We would hope that Natalie will contact us again when the time is right to resume our discussions on our relocation. We are ready to start the process and of the acquisition when the school board is ready to proceed. Thank you. So they're President and Vice President of Oak Ridge Homes and Support Services. Okay, wonderful. Anyone else? And just one addition, just to clarify, is that we, the school board as a whole, does want to do what is right for each homeowner, and we don't want anyone to be homeless. So we will find an appropriate place for each homeowner that needs to move when the time comes. Okay, well, go on with our agenda. We have the approval of the minutes from the regular board meeting October 8th.
I would so move to approve the regular board meeting minutes from October 8th.
Thank you, Director Kirk.
Second.
Thank you, Director Nystrom. Any discussion? If there are none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next up, we have the consent calendar. And one thing to note on the consent calendar, because of our new field trip policy, we needed to include all of the sporting-related overnight trips, and so there's quite a few of those, including one additional one we added in the amendment. And so those are part of the consent calendar now. If there's any thoughts on how we, if we want to change the policy so they don't have to be here, or if you want to pull any out, we could do that. So do we have a motion for the consent calendar?
So move.
Thank you, Director Campbell.
Second.
Thank you, Director Haglund. Discussion? Everyone's fine? Okay. All in favor of approving the consent calen, calendar, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Consent calendar is approved. Okay, we'll go on to site reports. First, we have a building project update, and it looks like Chris Zimmer and Marcy and Tim Hul are all going to present.
Good evening, everyone. I just wanted to give you a quick update of where we are in the overall process. Start with the high school. We're in schematic design there yet. We, I don't know if Lane wants to talk to this a little bit, but we had a meeting today with some organizations to talk about CTE, how we enhance the areas and tailor the program so that it means more to the community beyond the actual building components themselves. In addition to that, we're doing some additional CTE tours of some spaces next Tuesday, the 6th, including Alexandria-St. Michael-Hoverville and Sock Rapids Schools. And then we'll start some follow-up meetings later that week and the week after with some more details. We move schematic design to a point where we'll bring it to the board for presentation. Harrison New Elementary and Baxter and Nisswa are currently in design development. We'll be looking to come to you in a meeting in November here for approvals for those as we're moving forward. And with that, the next item that we'll be talking about is really related Forestview Middle School and the new elementary in Baxter as it relates to wrapping up the traffic study and our preferred site location that we're looking for input from the board.
Good evening, everyone. So as Chris said, I'll go through the Baxter schools' update of where we're at. I'll take you through the, just a little reminder of the proposal for the traffic study. We're, we're past that, but just remind you of that, the study results of the traffic study regarding the new elementary school and Forestview Middle School. Study results for the Noelwood Drive portion of that area. Then we looked at combinations of options. I'll show you some figures of those options. And then we'll talk about preliminary comparative level costs, talk to you about next steps. And then, any questions, and you could ask questions as we go through this, but. And then the goal of this meeting for the school board is to have you state a preference, vote on a preference that we can then take to the city and the county, the agencies that deal with the public infrastructure around the schools, and continue the process. So, the first thing, reminder of the traffic study. One reason for the, or one reason for the traffic study was to get rid of individual opinions. I was very confident in giving many engineering opinions. However, the county and the city wanted some real data to back up recommendations of dealing with traffic. There is going to be quite a bit of traffic, significant traffic added to the area due to the new elementary school. I use NES as an abbreviation. The traffic study was not the final answer. It just laid out the base, the background, the data. And then we have moved since the traffic study into some of those next steps. So for example, we've done some comparative cost estimating. There's going to be some preliminary layouts. Just continuing that work, working with public agencies, so staff has already met with city of Baxter staff to begin that process. There's going to be some things which we've already seen that don't quite jive maybe with what the traffic study was recommending or finding. And then there will be agreements, formal agreements, that would come back to the board as we go into that in final design and construction, of course. So lots of steps there. The next item, study results for the location of the new elementary school. From a traffic study perspective, locating the new elementary school off Jasperwood Drive, and you'll see a figure in a moment, would be the best. However, it's not impossible to locate it off Noelwood Drive. You'll see that there's just more issues and more costs. Regarding Forestview Middle School drop-off and pickup, I wanted to give you some information. Right now, as you know, the traffic stacks on Noelwood Drive, a public street, not a necessarily safe situation, aggravating situation. The study recommended 1,200 feet, about 1,200 feet of length for stacking, drop-off in the morning stacking and pickup in the afternoon. The present curb where people drop off kids in the circle is about 300 feet. The study did not indicate a specific dimension. They just indicated the overall dimension, and the reason they do that is driver behavior. But they feel confident in the study from raw data, again, and the video counts and whatnot, of recommending 1,200 feet. We just have to figure that out into the layout. We're working on, you know, preliminary layouts. Seems like every week we come up with a slightly different update. So we're looking at doubling, tripling the physical curb drop-off area while still trying to fit in that 1,200 feet off the public right-of-way. So we're working on that. Again, just preliminary layouts right now. Noelwood Drive, so one of the, the city streets impacted would be Noelwood Drive that goes along the east side of Forestview Middle School, FMS, in some of these slides. They had looked from a traffic study standpoint, one-way southbound. How about doing a, what they call a cul-de-sac? Basically, it's blocking off a portion of Noelwood. The main entrance into Forestview Middle School right now, block it off right there down to the south entrance into Forestview Middle School. What that would do is create, they say, two cul-de-sacs, but parent traffic would come in from the north, go into Forestview Middle School, and they wouldn't have to worry about cross-traffic. They would just come right out and head back north. School bus traffic would come in from the south, wouldn't have to worry about cross-traffic on Noelwood. So that was another option that was reviewed from a traffic perspective. And then the final one was basically to keep it a two-way, probably some modifications with turn lanes and whatnot. The one-way southbound, disregarded that after looking at some of the traffic issues. The two-way option works strictly from a traffic perspective. The, the cul-de-sac or blocking off a portion of Noelwood Drive would be the best and safest for the traffic. As you will see, there's other things besides just the traffic, and like I said, the two-way option works as well. So the combinations, if you kind of take all those, new elementary school, Forestview Middle School, Jasperwood, Noelwood, all those combinations. We came up with four options that we've done a little bit more investigation on. Option number one, new elementary school off a new Jasperwood Drive. Noelwood Drive would be cul-de-sacked or blocked off. Option number two, put the new elementary school off a new Jasperwood Drive and keep Noelwood Drive two-way. Option number three and four are putting the new elementary school off Noelwood Drive. Number three being cul-de-sacking Noelwood Drive or blocking off that segment. Number four being keeping Noelwood Drive a two-way. So just a map of option number one. And just to get everybody orientated, I'm going to try to do a little minimizing here. Whoops, away fly. Let's see, right there. Yeah, there we go. So up in the upper left is, and going down is County Road 48, kind of across the top. Down towards the bottom is Mapleton or County Road 170, and it actually, County Road 170, Mapleton actually turns and goes up to the new roundabout on 48, and Isle Drive goes north. Mount Nash is over on your left. And then Noelwood Drive, signal light at County Road 48 comes in and kind of serpentines past the school. This particular option is the new elementary school off Jasperwood Drive, and then doing the blocking off or cul-de-sacking of Noelwood Drive. The details of how it would be blocked off, we're not at that stage yet. So if this option would move forward, that would be something to be considered. Some traffic mitigation kinds of things. There's going to be some intersection improvements down along Mapleton. Obviously, again, there would have to be some kind of temporary removal, permanent removal of Noelwood Drive in this segment. Talked about bringing in a new drop-off lane. We've got some kind of sketches of that on Forestview Middle School. And then because we're blocking off Noelwood to through traffic, the traffic either has to go around to this roundabout or up Mount Nash. Now, the study was a 20-year study, so they took into account normal traffic growth. They took into account a new elementary school and a little bit of growth with the new elementary school. They took into account some growth with Forestview Middle School. And they took into account eventual development south of Mapleton. And so part of the traffic study then did say there needs to be a roundabout at Mount Nash and 48. I'll say somewhat similar to what we see out there today. So that's the figure for option number one with the new elementary school off a new Jasperwood Drive. Just to let you know, this Jasperwood Drive right over here, there is water and sewer underneath it. It's just a cut through the trees right now, no road. So that's number one. Number two, again, new Jas, new Jasper, new elementary school off a new Jasperwood Drive. Tried to get that whole thing into one word. This would have Noelwood Drive being two-way still. So you'll notice the roundabout went away up here because Noelwood's a two-way. So you've got, you know, three options of traffic heading north and south. However, because this is a two-way, because we are improving the drop-off pickup lane, traffic will be exiting here at the main entrance. We'll have cross-traffic still. We'll have some residual traffic probably from the new elementary school. The traffic study does recommend a roundabout here. There's rather significant stacking back into Forestview Middle School if you had a stop condition. So we, we looked into the numbers on that, and that's why the roundabout is recommended. Again, some intersection improvements down on Mapleton Road. And I think that's, kind of summarizes this option. It's a pretty good option from a lot of different perspectives. The investment of the roundabout relative to a new elementary school that's already out there. Keeping Noelwood Drive two-way traffic while the, the blocking off cul-de-sac is, is kind of a unique way to address some things. This does look at the big picture, long-term, of keeping Noelwood Drive open. Option number three, then, we wanted to investigate a little bit further. We already have Noelwood Drive, so, you know, why don't we put the new elementary school off of Noelwood Drive? I think everybody would agree. Lots of traffic then, lots of traffic. You're really concentrating a lot of traffic. This option has that blocking off of Noelwood. It's a little shorter just simply because we have to get a bus lane out and connected to the south end of Forestview as well as to Mapleton. But it's still blocked off. So traffic would come in, Forestview Middle School come out. Traffic would go into the new elementary school, come out. Again, we have the roundabout. The roundabout actually is a little more robust, some additional lanes, dedicated lanes because of the additional traffic. And the other big thing that happens is since we closed off Noelwood, we're still going to have, up at the top of your screen there, we're still going to have this roundabout in the future from a traffic perspective. And the other big thing is the existing signalized intersection. Because we're putting all the traffic on Noelwood for the new elementary school and Forestview Middle School, from a traffic perspective, we would need a lot of additional turn lanes. So even though a stoplight intersection could work, you'd have like double left turn lanes, you're going to have to widen the road out. You're going to have to do longer masts arms for the signal, so there would be some cost involved with that. The city of Baxter in preliminary discussions, still looking at a Jasperwood Drive. So you'll see here in a moment that. And then the last option we looked at, getting rid of that blocking off or cul-de-sacking, keeping it two-way, new elementary school off Noelwood. Basically, just about all of the same improvements, except you'll notice, oh, that little thing just keeps coming down. You'll notice that the roundabout isn't up there, and that's because Noelwood's two-way. Mount Nash is two-way. Mapleton County Road 170 is two-way. We've got three ways for traffic to get north, and it doesn't trigger an intersection improvement. So I went through those figures pretty fast. We'll come back to them if you have questions. Everybody wants to know costs. Just to let you know, there's what's called, when you do public infrastructure improvements, the city of Baxter will require a feasibility study. This isn't even to the level of a feasibility study. When you get to a feasibility study, you start to line item out some of these kinds of construction items and engineering. some of these kinds of construction items and engineering. We haven't line-itemed out those. We're looking at a comparative level stage right now. Roundabout, I put in as a million dollars. Will it cost a million dollars construction? It could maybe cost $800,000 construction, depending on the terrain, depending on which roundabout we're talking about. It might cost a million dollars in construction plus, you know, the engineering. So, they're comparative numbers. I think we're, you know, in the ballpark of real-life numbers, but they're comparative. And so, when we look at those comparative numbers for the four options that I just got done discussing, the first one where we have the new elementary school off Jasperwood, and then, we cul-de-sack or block off Knollwood, that was 3.2 million. Option number two, where we have the new elementary school off Jasperwood and Knollwood stays a two-way, that's just a little over 3 million. I round up 3.1 million. Option three and four, you can see, are pretty expensive. We've got new elementary school off Knollwood Drive in three and four. The first one, number three there, Knollwood Drive cul-de-sack or blocked off, 4.7 million. We've got Jasperwood Drive included in there as part of some of the improvements needed to make it work with the city. And then, number four, 3.8 million, 3.78 million comparative cost. So, going through all those figures, going through the costs, going through the meetings to date, next steps, we would like you to vote on a preference for an option to take forward then, take that preference forward to the City of Baxter and start working through, I should say, continue to work through their processes for improvements in the public infrastructure or public right-of-way. The comparative numbers I gave you were in the public right-of-way. Each of the sites will have their own costs, and they'll probably be pretty similar. I will say that if you put the new elementary school off Knollwood, there are some wetlands that we have to work around. Whereas, we put the new elementary school off Jasperwood Drive, there are, it's a flatter terrain there. So, stayed away from that a little bit right now, but just, you know, anecdotally. School District goes through the various city committees and processes, just like a developer from, again, from the city's perspective. We go through preliminary designs, we get final designs. We have development agreement that'll come back to the school board from the city. And then, we get into construction and have a nice improvement for the future. Okay, questions? I may have gone through that way fast, but that's because I've been going through this for a while, so I apologize if I went too fast.
So, option one is what you're recommending?
Nope. So, option two, which is the new elementary school off a new Jasperwood Drive and Knollwood being two-way.
Okay.
And I just want to clarify, because those numbers up there are, match the cost estimate that's in the packet, and it's just because we have to add the price of the land to option three and four, and then also the price of an assessed estimate of Jasperwood. Correct. So, if you were looking at that, wondering why they didn't match, that's why. Thank you.
The roundabouts at either Knollwood or the Mountain Nash one would be totally our cost or the city share?
So, the, let me go back here. So, the roundabout at Mountain Nash, if we cul-de-sacked or blocked off Knollwood, which we're not recommending, the city would've said, hey, you're forcing traffic around. The school is forcing traffic around. So, it would've been a city cost. The negotiations, I'm sure, would've tried to work in, you know, some city component to that. But, at this stage of the game, we're saying that when you start to look at everything, this option number two figure that I have on the screen, it doesn't have that roundabout up at Mountain Nash. Because we keep Knollwood a two-way.
Right.
And it doesn't have to, we don't have to revise the signalized intersection, which is nice. That'll still work. Just because of the amount of traffic coming out of Forest View Middle School, if you can imagine the stacking that's on Knollwood right now, and we improve it, now, all that traffic's gotta get out onto Knollwood. And it's quite a bit of traffic in such a short amount of time.
But, this roundabout there in front of the entrance.
That's the roundabout at the main entrances.
That would be totally our cost.
And that would be, right, because of the school, you know?
And I think you misspoke. The other one would be totally our cost too, if we were to do that one. You'd said it was a city cost, but I think you meant school district cost.
I'm sorry, I did mean, yep, I meant, yep, thank you for correcting.
That roundabout in front of Forest View, if we do option two, is that absolutely necessary? Because I don't see a difference in traffic because we have the elementary school off of Jasperwood than we have now. And we don't have a roundabout there now. And there is some stacking, but it's just at two short periods during the day.
So, if you don't do the roundabout and you do a stop condition like it is today, again, this is future traffic too incorporated. You'll have a 90-second, 96-second average delay and about 500 feet of stacking back into Forest View Middle School. Again, like you said, it's for that hour window in the morning, hour window in the evening. I, just again, from a traffic study perspective and a traffic flow perspective, if I walk out there today and they say, oh, he's an engineer, let's get him. Look at all this traffic out on Knollwood. And then, I walk out there four years from now and they say, hey, there's an engineer, let's get him. There's all this stacking back into Forest View Middle School. From a traffic study perspective, again, with all the different things that are going on, that's why the roundabout's recommended.
But, that would be a smaller roundabout.
We did look at conversations, very preliminary to date, of what's called a mini-roundabout. The city hasn't totally bought on board at this stage of the game.
What does that mean?
Pardon me?
What does a mini-roundabout mean?
Great question. So, a mini-roundabout, well, the roundabout up at Isle and the roundabouts on College have earth in the middle, fairly big circles. A mini-roundabout is meant to try to fit within an existing intersection, if at all possible. They have concrete, they call them splitter islands. As you come up on the roundabout, you gotta turn right. Instead of a barrier curb and maybe some plantings or something, they're just a concrete hump. And then, the actual roundabout circle is concrete so that if a larger truck, which shouldn't be too many large trucks on Knollwood Drive...
But, there'd be a lot of school buses.
School buses may be able to work through a mini-roundabout without going up on that ramp. But, that middle section, instead of being earthed, is a concrete ramp. So, possibly, again, we haven't gotten into any kind of design on a mini-roundabout, but possibly the back, you know, left wheel, I guess, if you're going around the roundabout, might go up and over. But, it's not a, it's not like a six-inch barrier curb. It's a rounded or smoother transition. They are, there is some volume per hour levels or requirements. So, we're approaching that with that one hour in the morning, one hour in the afternoon.
This intersection's an example of one of the intersections we've had continued discussion with the city of what, to what extent do we need to, is a three-way stop good enough, you know, with costs in mind? That's been definitely part of the discussion. So, those discussions will continue forward. I don't think we've landed on a decision, but these are, as Tim has mentioned, a couple of things that have been thrown out as possible solutions.
And a mini-roundabout, would that be a half a million or?
Right, so for the comparative cost estimating, I would use a half a million versus a million.
Marcy, what was your comment about the land on option three and four?
So, option three and four has a total cost, but it does not include, when we were in negotiations, the city said, now, remember, if you do this, then you have to purchase the land. And also, if we updated Jasperwood, you would be assessed for that update.
So, the land is included in options one and two?
Yes, yes.
Because Jasperwood's being built.
Right. So, if we build Jasperwood, then we would technically try to come to an agreement where the land would be swapped for Jasperwood.
So, the land, the purchase of land is in option one and two? How much was that, is that?
They threw out a number at the last meeting of about 600,000 for the actual land and then, close to 400,000 for assessed assessments of Jasperwood. It was just rough estimates.
And so, in order to keep these numbers comparative, that's, you know, we included the same number for land and Jasperwood, well, I should say Jasperwood.
So, is there 600,000 for land in all four options included in these numbers?
So, the million dollars, it's a benefit for Jasperwood, basically is 600,000 for land plus foreign for assessment in options three and four. It's a million dollars to build Jasperwood as a whole. So, we, the idea is that the city would give the land if we actually create the improvement on one and two.
Yeah, I get that, but is the 600,000 included in all four options then?
Yes.
Yes, essentially, yes.
Thank you.
To keep it comparative.
Yes.
And on the, how far, how far south does, is the proposed land go on Jasper?
Let me go up to one of those. So, are you talking, Tom, here with the new elementary school?
The property, how far south on Jasper?
So, right now, if you can follow my cursor, coming along this portion, going up Jasperwood, there's a little bump out here, and then, across over to Knollwood and then to the treatment plant and public works facility. Oh, whoops, down back. All of that is the City of Baxter. And so, the school district, as Chris was saying and Marcy was saying, they're, we're trying to look at some parcel here. I'm just estimating a north property line. And then, some south property line, that would become school district land. The remainder over here, the city owns on this side, and then, some remainder here would be city land still. Does that answer your question, or did I get you lost there?
Well, so, is a 400,000 assessment, is that just for the portion of the school property about in Jasper?
Yes.
In an estimated section of that portion Jasperwood, yes.
It's not the whole Jasper?
No.
And it's a 400,000 assessment, and the land value they're saying is 600,000?
Those are, yeah, plus or minus numbers right now for discussion purposes, yep.
And in option three and four, then they're wanting, the city would want us to pay for the land and the assessment?
Right, because option three, the amount that's on that first proposed estimate is just to do all these things that are in the, in the traffic study. And then, they said, okay, and then you would also have to buy the land and you'd have the assessment of Jasperwood.
At some point in time when they, when they build it.
Yep.
It's in option two as well. That's the one that connect.
And you said option three and four would be built on a wetland, so there'd be wetland issues?
Well, we haven't finalized the specific site layout. It's a little hard to see here, but there's a wetland right here. There's actually a wetland right underneath where we would like to theoretically bring the school bus lane out and the exiting lane for the school out. Things that can be worked around, but they would, relative to being on a flatter parcel of ground, there would be obviously a little more cost from an internal site.
Okay. How about the condition of the trees and the maturity of the trees of, if it comes off, if it's located coming in off of Jasper, is it? Or, I don't know, was that?
It's hard to see. There is a, I believe it's the police dog training area right under here. So, there is a bit of cleared-out area already. I believe this area was also timbered, cleared for timber. But, other than that, I guess I don't have a, yeah, a sense of timber.
Is that being looked at at all as far as, you know, versus just clear-cutting and regardless?
Yeah, minimal impact will be studied when we, as soon as we have a slight option, we'll start looking at how do they minimize that.
So, it's how many acres of land? Do we know what the acreage is of the land?
Forty is what's been talked about.
Does that include that outdoor activity area?
Yeah, that would maybe be as well as a problem.
Okay.
I think initially, as the figure shows, you know, it'd be looked at just to have one playfield. And then, is there space maybe for additional, you know, fields? At least on the layout, yes, there is. Good questions, other questions?
When people bring their children in, how do you see them exiting the school? They go south on Jasperwood, or do you think they'll go north?
So, right now, most of the traffic leaving Forest View Middle School goes back north. That would still be the option. They could continue or go right and head south, or they could go north. As far as Jasperwood traffic goes, I anticipate that they would head up Jasperwood. This intersection has dedicated turn lanes in all legs right now. And then, up to the roundabout, and that's my anticipation. There would be some, I suppose, that might come out this way.
And then, it would become a four-way stop?
Pardon me?
Or a three-way stop on Mapleton?
So, right, initially, right, the traffic study didn't indicate any need for stoplights or roundabouts or anything like that. So, right, it would just be a stop condition.
Okay.
I don't know, Bob, if it would be three-way or one-way, but it would be a stop condition.
So, instead of a roundabout or blocking the Knollwood completely, could we just have like during those two times during the day, just a temporary blockage? Police or barricaded?
There were some preliminary discussions with the city, since it is, Knollwood is their street, when we were talking about the blocking off cul-de-sack option of, you know, do you have a gate that everybody knows from 6:30 to 8:30 it's closed? And from 2:30 to 3:30 it's closed, or whatever. So, there are some potential options like that that have been talked about. The challenge again, though, is those times, you know, as the area grows, will it stay the best for the overall area? And that's why we started to come down to this option number two with the two-way traffic.
But, maybe it could be something we could try for a while and then put in a mini-roundabout later.
Well, with the negotiations with the city, they'll, I mean, that'll be part of the discussion on how that pans out.
Was there any discussion, you know, on the roundabout now or that, the drop-off? That's both in and out coming out of there. If we were entering in on the new proposed north, you have your stack lane, and when you exit, you don't have that traffic going, fighting to get in. It seems like if you want it, you know, coming out of there and going to the right isn't a problem at all, but even going to the left, I just wonder how much, if that would be a, you know, for the cars that are currently wanting to go in, they all have to come in, in that same place, whereas now, they would enter on top.
So, you'd think the stacking would be less even?
Yeah, I would think that it'd be far less. And then, even, you know, worst-case scenario, what if that was only a right exit only?
So, I specifically drilled down with the engineer that was into the guts of the numbers, because I said, if we have this one-way coming in, all that traffic that is coming in that used to come down here and go in, you know, is up here now. And so, if I'm coming out, I don't have to worry about that kind of traffic coming across. It's still a stop condition, assume there is no roundabout there. It's still a stop condition. The thing that he pointed out is that there's still traffic that would be heading from the south, heading north to get up here, whereas, right now, it would turn left. Maybe not a lot, but the other thing he pointed out too, again, growth over time. We're adding some level of new elementary school traffic that, you know, people will be doing the back and forth between the two schools thing one way or another. So, they accounted for an increase in that, the background increase of traffic. The other thing that it just is taking me a little while to figure out is, if indeed, we do improve the drop-off, right now, the exiting traffic is awesome because we've already, boy, we've already choked the traffic coming in. So, the traffic getting out's a breeze. But if we improve, like what you're intending to, improve the drop-off, now, I mean, there's gonna be a lot of traffic coming out at a fairly quicker pace. And so, the combination of those things, 'cause I, I had the same thing, Tom, I thought, jeez, we're gonna improve it with it, there's not gonna be that intersecting traffic. But when you start to add up all the numbers, it, it, it does add up.
When you, when you wanna exit right now, it's the traffic coming from the north that, that backs, backs them up. And if that's not happening, not coming.
But if you are, and, and I know you made a comment about a right-out only, and again, we haven't, you know, delved into that level, how, how you would enforce it, and how you would allow a left-out at different times, I don't know. And maybe a right-out with a port, they call it a port chop, concrete island that forces people out. We could look at that a little bit to see how the numbers pan out. But any amount of traffic coming from the south, which will be greater, and then, just that stray vehicle that's heading south, for whatever reason, they're, they're going to the new elementary school this way for some reason. You know? That will back that traffic up. 'Cause we specifically drilled down another level into that very question. So, there are options, um, we talked, you know, comparative cost-wise, uh, you know, this one's at the two-point, excuse me, three-point-one, three-point-zero-three-zero, three-point-one, um, least cost of the four comparatively speaking. But, yeah, we're still looking at-
But that includes that roundabout.
It includes the one million dollars for a roundabout, and so, can you do five hundred thousand for a mini roundabout? Will the city accept that? Can you even forget about the roundabout, do a right-out? Okay, what's that, you know, are we gonna all of a sudden cause another intersection to go up a notch in traffic control? So, those are some things we can-
Is there a traffic study done when Forestview was built? I would assume.
There was, yes, the city required a traffic study for Knollwood Drive, yes.
So most likely, it was designed with the traffic study, and here's what we think is the best, the best round, but, yeah.
But there's gonna be a significant amount of traffic in this area with the new elementary school. Not, not everybody's gonna be over here at the new elementary school.
But if the elementary school, maybe I'm not looking at this right, whether the elementary school is there or five miles from there, the number of kids going to Forestview isn't changing.
Correct.
The number of drop-off isn't theoretically changing. The fact that, you know, if someone's gonna drop off just to the elementary school, they're likely not gonna come down Knollwood, and-
Not after the first time, probably, right?
Yeah, I mean, I, so I don't really see that there's going to be more traffic, I don't understand why there would be more traffic on Knollwood.
But you know, Tom, if, if I could say this, so let's just say you're dropping off the elementary school and you come in from the north. If you're going back to North Baxter, most people will go up Knollwood to Highway two-ten, that's just the way people have always done it.
If you're dropping off at the new-
Yeah, let's just say you're, you just have a child to drop off at the elementary.
Yeah.
If you live in North Baxter, or you live in the Parkwood-North Knollwood addition, you're gonna come back down to Maplewood, and then you're gonna go north on Knollwood, it's just the quickest way.
Only the, well, maybe you would not.
Well, Reed would too, he lives in North Baxter, so.
I, I would think a lot of people would wanna avoid
I would think so.
the middle school, and they would go the other way.
Yes.
I would think.
Such a quick, easy out the other way.
But you have a stoplight on forty-eight, so you know you can get through.
You have a roundabout going the other way, and you're on your way.
A lot of people don't like roundabouts.
Well, yeah, I, I, okay.
Sorry.
I think at this point, okay, I thought you were gonna say something, okay. At this point, I think, it looks to me like two is the, the best option. I wouldn't want to put the entrance to the elementary on the same road as the entrance to the middle school. So I, I agree that two is, I think there's some negotiations to be done with the final cost, so. As far as whether we need a roundabout or not. I, I'm kind of on the wavelength that we may be able to get away without a roundabout, 'cause we have today, and it's only for those two periods of time.
And when all that sort of come out in the discussion with the city?
And so that's, yeah, that'll be the, the proof in the pudding, is the discussions with the city. You know, the city engineer sat in with me when I drilled down further with the traffic study, uh, numbers guy. Because he too, I think, had the same opinion that pretty much all of us. I can go back to that first slide about no personal opinions. That's why we did the traffic study, but, um, you know, we're still gonna question, and we're still gonna ask those questions.
Yep.
Yeah, and my, you know, again, a traffic study, it's, it's only so good also, and at some points-
There's a range, for sure.
And so we've gotta look at it, and if there was a reason for this roundabout that, you know, it's, it's almost like a separate standalone piece, and I think what's being proposed with coming in further north, one way in and one way out is gonna have a significant, huge positive impact. And if it doesn't work, we can put the roundabout in later, 'cause it's not really changing anything.
Well, and that would have to be part, uh, you know, the city is, has two viewpoints here, so they're treating the school district as a developer. Historically, they haven't said, yeah, developer, do that, and if it gets worse, then we'll come back and find you and do something different. That being said, you're the school district, you're not going anywhere. So, um, that'll have to be part of the discussions and, and whatnot. The desire tonight is to get a, is to get a preference of the school board. Um, again, we're dealing with public infrastructure, so we have to work through the city. But to have that preference from the school board so that we can start to focus in on, here is the layouts in general that we want, let's get down a little bit more into some of the next details. Does that help?
So I can, uh, understand, when you say as a developer, I, I understand that from a Jasperwood drive, but because of putting another entrance in, is considered a developer then?
Well, I don't think, I don't think the city broke it down by specific, uh, components or specific construction. With the new elementary school going in that area, you're seen as a, a developer, a traffic, uh, generator, a new traffic generator. Developer's a strong word, but that's-
So if we, if we said Forestview drop-off, everything is great, would they require, are they gonna require change in, in and out of Forestview?
Well, I think the, the city knows that the drop-off at Forestview Middle School isn't the greatest, and they've got traffic backed up onto their city street. And so, part of this traffic study was, what can everyone do together to get traffic off the city street? Am I getting to your question, or did I miss it? I mean, I might not have given you a good answer, but I hope I, I hope I got to your question at least.
And one of the points, even without the roundabout, if we left it a three-way stop, the backup would be on the Forestview road, not on the city street now.
Correct, and so, um, you know, I, I-
That's our problem.
I suppose, right, I suppose, the city could say, okay, that's fine, you know, good luck, school district, and then we just have to tell the people that we just transferred them from Knollwood into the parking lot of Forestview Middle School.
But part of that whole, it's, it's a double lane coming through, so the efficiency. Right now, we have a bottleneck, you get one car in the little roundabout, and you're stuck, you might have five ahead of you.
That's what I was trying to, yeah, trying to say earlier, I think we'll make things much more efficient coming in. So,
That's why.
Me sitting there dropping my niece or nephew off and waiting at that stop sign going, okay, I can get up, that's not the same situation.
Yeah.
Because you're gonna have a better, more free-flowing exiting traffic, and now all of a sudden, they're all gonna come to that stop sign.
Yeah.
Great questions, thank you.
And then, three weeks ago, we entered that agreement with the city of Baxter to enter the property, to find the best site. Is this the best site? Have you done the survey? The survey of the land, so, where it's sitting here, that's the best building site?
I believe so, yes.
Off Jasperwood?
Yeah, just off of Jasperwood, so.
One of the flatter areas of the site.
Okay.
So, the goal of this meeting is to seek, uh, a vote on the school board's preference for-
Yeah, so we're done with the informational portion, and now we're going into new business, and our first action is to approve the site location and layout for the new elementary, as noted in option two as the recommendation.
Well, Madam Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve option two, um, for the new elementary school that would be off Jasperwood Drive, with a two-way option on Knollwood Drive.
Thank you, Director.
Second.
Thank you, Director Campbell, further discussion?
Just, um, for clarity again, because of the discussion on the round, the roundabout on Knollwood, does that mean that?
We're not approving that, nope.
Nope.
We should have a meeting scheduled tomorrow afternoon to take this recommendation out and start drilling down into, okay, what do we exactly need, what's gonna be enforced?
For, for the Forestview in and out?
Correct.
Okay.
Good clarification, any other comments? Okay, so, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, we have Marcy Lord to talk to us about the fund transfer from Fund One to Fund Four.
Good evening, in your packet, there is a memo for the approval of the transfer this year. State basic, um, excuse me, totally on a different topic, uh, early childhood screenings. We collect revenue, and the expenses exceed the revenue, so we do do a transfer from Fund One to Fund Four. And the transfer needed this year is twenty-four thousand, five seventy-eight oh seven. And in that memo, it does have a history of the number of screenings, so in seventeen eighteen, we did four hundred and ninety-one. And prior to that, it was four hundred and ninety-seven, and it does have the historical amount of the transfer as well. Are there any questions?
Is, is this in our budget, this transfer, every year?
Yes.
And so we budgeted probably twenty-five thousand dollars?
Yes. And it takes board approval in order to do that transfer.
I'll move to approve the transfer from Fund One to Fund Four as presented.
Thank you, Director Haglund.
Second.
Thank you, Director Robinson, further discussion? Are there none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion carries unanimously. And next we have approval, and I guess, uh, Heidi Han, is she here?
She is not here this evening.
Superintendent Larson, will you handle the new policy, one-ten?
The policy being brought forth, uh, tonight, um, is the first reading of a recommended policy for service animals in the school district. One of the things that we have found, um, particularly in this year, is that there have been, um, three people, to be exact, that have needed, um, service animals to come with them, um, it, to school, whether it be a child or an adult that, that is teaching in our school. And we have no policy at this point regarding service animals. So working with our legal counsel, and looking at the MSBA policy, this is the service, this is the policy that is recommended by, uh, throughout the state, uh, for other school districts who have service animals within their schools. I do want to make this clear to the Board of Education that, um, this is for licensed service animals only. It, it is not for, um, oh, I lost the word. Help me, the other kind.
Emotional support?
Therapy dogs, thank you. Thank you, I just lost that, it is, does not include therapy dogs, it includes service animals only. And so it is our recommendation to move this policy forward for the first reading tonight. Since this is a new policy, um, it, we would have two more readings, and if you had any questions, we can address them at another meeting. But I would ask that the board approve this policy for the first reading this evening.
I just have a clarification. Service animals typically are dogs that are trained. Did I read the small horse?
Small horses can be accepted, yes.
How can a small horse be a service animal? I mean-
I don't know, but-
But that would be allowed?
But usually they are dogs, and any that have been brought to our attention have been dogs, so.
So we do have service animals in our district already, so we need this policy.
Yeah.
But a small horse would not be allowed in a school building? I mean, I'm sorry, I-
Then on the bus.
Yeah. No?
Uh, you wouldn't have to, no, probably not.
Okay. Does anyone else, I-
Yeah, I thought that was crazy.
Okay.
And how you, how do you train a horse?
Well, they go through the trainings just like a dog would, and so I'm, my assumption is the fact that I, I've never seen a, a service horse, but my assumption is the fact that it's trained just like a dog is, and there must be certain particular cases where these miniature horses are the service animal of choice. So, it doesn't necessarily talk about the size of a dog either, that is, has been trained for a service, uh, animal. Uh, and the thing of it is, is that, yeah, it has to go through rigorous training in order to get that. So, you know, we, we certainly can talk about it and look at it, but, um, all that we've seen at this point have been dogs.
Okay.
And so, and Jenny, is there something that you wanna add? I see you looking, no?
There are many hu- miniature horses that are trained as service animals.
Okay, cool.
But again, we have never seen one, so.
Okay.
So.
I saw move a, approve a first reading of new policy number one-ten for service animals.
Thank you, Director Campbell.
And is that with the, a change regarding the horses, or as written?
As written, 'cause the horses are in there, right?
Okay, as written, okay.
Give a second?
Second.
Thank you, Director Haglund, further discussion?
My only comment about this was, I was concerned about the allergy aspect, 'cause the children are allergic, allergic to dogs, or horses, or whatever. And so I had talked with Superintendent Larson earlier today, and, um, they would work with that in, so that they wouldn't be exposed to the animal. If they had that allergy, it would all be worked out.
Yeah, thank you for bringing that up, because there are always situations that occur, um, every day, for different kinds of situations. And if something like that occurred, or the fear of, of a service animal or something, we would, we would adjust and work with that, on both parties, to benefit both parties.
Great, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, any other discussion? So we have a first from Director Campbell, a second from Director Haglund, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, and then we have approval of the first reading of MSBA policy updates, and so these are just suggested updates, um, to current policies we have, and I think there are, with the removal of that one, there's seventeen? So we can take these all as one, unless anyone wants to pull any out.
These policies, I should tell you too, are, uh, changes recommended by Minnesota School Board Association based on legislative action that occurred during last year's legislative assess- session. And so they've taken the, that legislative action and brought forth the recommendations to meet the, the criteria of the laws. And so, um, there's nothing other than what had been brought forward by MSBA.
I just had a question on the tobacco-free environment one. If a teacher does smoke, they have to go where?
Outside, off of school.
Property, so across the street?
Yep.
I just had one comment on policy two-oh-six. With regard to the change from the verbiage going from citizen to persons, and I talked with, um, Assistant Superintendent Heidi Han, and she's going to do some further checking on that with the attorneys.
Right. And so we'll report at the next meeting regarding that policy, yeah.
Can I make a suggestion that we delete the, the comments that are included by the drafters? Typically, they're called out as notes. I don't believe it's intended that those would be enacted by us as part of the policies. And then I see there's at least one blank space where we failed to include who the, who the contact will be. Policy four-zero-one, equal employment opportunity- opportunity notification in section E.
I can clarify that, that it would be Jenny Castle, our human resources. So thank you for bringing that up, yep. 401.
I don't think that precludes a first reading.
Okay, perfect, thank you. Yes, and we'll take care of, we will take any of the notes out of there. Absolutely.
So do I have a motion to approve the first reading with those clarifications just mentioned?
So moved.
Thank you, Director Robinson.
Second.
Thank you, Director Neistrom. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion carries. Thank you. Next, we have approval of the ratification of the custodial contract.
Hi.
Hi.
Good evening. So before you tonight, you have for your consideration the custodial contract agreement, the collective bargaining agreement for 2017 to 2000, I'm sorry, yeah, 2017 to 2019. The whole contract's in your board packet, but I just wanted to highlight the major changes. The salary schedule includes a 1.75% increase for 2017-18. And then 2018-19, it includes another 1.75% increase for the full salary schedule, and then a $15 per month increase for day engineers and higher level positions. It's a two-year contract. It'll expire in June of 2019. With that, can I answer any questions?
Any questions? Anyone? No? Okay. There was one little minor typo, and I can't find it now, but it was pretty minor. It was a dash instead of a dot for the, like, .75 increase over a number of years. Just that you correct that in the final contract.
Okay.
I'll see if I can find it before we leave here. And maybe it was corrected already. Oh, yeah, it was table, page 12, the table for effective 1-1-2007. Over 10 years through 15 years, instead of 0.24, it had 0-24. So just-
Thank you.
Yeah. So, this is a roll call clarification, probably. I think so. Yeah, okay. So do we have a motion to approve the contract?
So moved.
Thank you, Director Kern.
Second.
Thank you, Director Campbell. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote on this.
Tom Haglund?
Yes.
Sue Kern?
Yes.
Ruth Nelson?
Yes.
Bob Neistrom?
Yes.
Chris Robinson?
Yes.
Reed Campbell?
Yes.
All in favor?
Thank you very much. So it's approved. Thank you. And one more action item that we added tonight was on the agenda property acquisition, or the property acquisition to work with city. So would you like to talk about that a lot more or make your motion?
Yeah. So in the past week, we've received a lot of emails and discussion in the community about the meeting that we had in September. I think it caught a lot of people off guard with the number of properties that we need to acquire. I have talked with Councilmember Dave Badeau and also Mayor Mink, and they would really, they don't want an adversarial role with us. They would like to work with us side by side. And so one of the things I suggested was, could we have a joint meeting of the school board and the city council? And what I'd like to see, just where we could discuss, part of it is confusion too. They don't totally understand all the ramifications of our plan on what we're building. And, you know, I think as a school board and a school district, we, you know, the referendum passed, we've been a part of this process now for, you know, three, three-plus years. And so we understand it. But even though the community voted for this, you know, when they see some of this stuff, it's sort of a shock. And I think we need to slow the process down a little bit, especially with these property acquisitions, and involve the city, because they have certain ideas about not only property acquisition, but street vacations, say around Garfield and Lowell and Harrison, and involve them more in our process. They want to work as an equal partner with us. And they understand that we, as a school district, we have to run the business of the school district. They're not trying to tell us what to do, just like hopefully we try not to tell them. But I think just better communication on our part with the city, because it's huge, you know, the number of properties that we're looking at to acquire, the streets that we are looking to vacate, it does affect neighborhoods. And so I'm just proposing that we would sit down with the city council to have a discussion. And with that, I'm, I'm, well, and this would be the whole board if you agree, to ask the city to delay their decision on what planning and zoning is recommending for them to vote on next Monday, which is a one-year moratorium on the demolition of any buildings within the city of Brainerd. I'm just asking them to put a little more thought into that, and hopefully we can meet before they would make that final decision.
That's next Monday?
I believe it's next Monday. And so if they voted for that, we could not tear down any buildings within Brainerd. And I think that would even include Lincoln School, even though we own the building.
If it becomes a parking lot.
If it becomes a parking lot.
I, okay, as I think about this, that's a large meeting. Would it be better if we just designated, like, two of us and to meet with two, whoever's most concerned in the city council about it before we go in? And maybe we need a meeting eventually, maybe that would be a good thing to have. But maybe we should start out with a smaller group, because it's a lot of detail. I think the meeting might become overwhelming with all the things we want to talk about.
Whatever the board feels.
Other thoughts?
Yeah, I agree, it should be a small committee first.
We could designate two, for the superintendent and two board members, to meet with representatives of the city of their choice.
So Director Neistrom, in your communications, the city council members that you've talked with believe that the participation of the planning and zoning administrator and the city administrator in nearly every meeting that went on for almost four years was not adequate representation of the city in the process?
You know, I think they were there. I think the thing that was not identified was the properties that would go away. And I think what they thought was, especially with the elementary schools, it was more of a safety issue with drop-off. And so like, for example, Garfield, they put a lot of money into the safe routes. What is that, safe?
Safe routes for school.
Yeah, safe routes to school. And if they vacate any of those streets, that money's been applied, they have to give that money back to the federal government. So they feel they've made a big investment there. And the other thing is, they don't feel, they, when they look at the plans, they see extra parking that has to be created, but it would just primarily be for staff. And so they're saying, they relaxed the parking ordinances earlier this year to say that the school district did not have to comply with the parking ordinance. And I don't know to what extent, but it greatly reduced what our requirement was to have off-street parking for schools. So they're saying, well, if that's the case, why do you need this?
I think one of the things we really need to clarify with the city after I've talked to, the representatives I've talked to, is what is their rules now for off-street parking? Because we were basing it on the ordinances, and it sounds like they've relaxed those now. And what are, and then what are our needs, what are our wants and needs? Because we want to make sure our staff and our kids are safe. And I think we have to come to some agreement on what those numbers are, and I don't think we know what those numbers are right now. So, but that's why I don't think we're ready to have, I thought about this some more, and I just don't think we're ready to have a meeting with all of us. I think there has to be some previous meetings before we do that, if we ever do that, I'm not sure. But I think if we designated two of you along with either Superintendent Larson and probably someone from-
Yeah, we'd need some information from Woods and Smith Milting and ICS. That information brought forward that the board needed.
Because I don't think we have a clear feeling from the city what they want. And I'm fine with that. I mean, it might, you know, it might save us some dollars if we can buy less properties and still keep our kids and staff safe.
Well, I would volunteer to be one of the people.
I would do it, but I'm gone next week if it-
Right. Director Haglund, I know you had some-
Well, I, I mean, I'm in, obviously in full support. We want to work with the city. We want to have clear understanding of what their requirements are. I was a strong proponent of postponing any land purchases until we clearly knew what the expectations are, which, and this is even news again about if they have relaxed. So I'm definitely in support of that. I don't believe that, you know, this full board needs to meet with their full council. So we need to, it's just common courtesy to work with, work with our partners. But, you know, what they do and decide they want to do next Monday is up to them, if that's, you know, that's their prerogative to do what they want to do. So I'm full support of, it would just be a natural thing to work with the city.
Absolutely.
I definitely get to do that.
So are you willing to be on the team to visit with them?
Yeah, I mean, I certainly can.
Or I could if it's passed next week.
Okay.
So should we just leave it in your capable hands to create this?
To get it organized, yeah. I'm meeting with Cassandra Thurstonson on Wednesday, and I will bring it up to her if that's what, yep.
Okay.
See if we can work something out and get a date arranged.
Okay.
I think if they're going to move this forward, well, we can't deconstruct anything. We need to talk about that before Monday, if that's actually when they're voting on that. Because that would stop our whole project almost.
No, not necessarily. I mean, the city, the council, they'll make their decisions and do what they want to do. So what do, what do we want to talk about?
It would just mean that some of our parking could not be-
No, I know, but what, what?
Well, for example, we're looking at schematics for Harrison, and part of that included some of the properties aligning that. If we couldn't get rid of them, or deconstruct, or whatever the proper word would be, then would be able to move forward.
One of the, and I just thought of this, as you mentioned this, Director Kern, but like, for example, in Harrison, we talked about two of the houses to the west, which would include the vacation, I think of 15th Street. And they said, well, what if you go ahead and buy those, and then in the final plan, you don't do anything? You've just taken two houses off the tax rolls. And so that's part of their concern. And I think if we just sat down with them and explained the process, and that that's not our intention, that we would never buy a house until we knew for sure, you know, what the, you know, the final plan would be.
Absolutely. So do you want to make a motion, or do we have a motion?
I don't know. Do we need a motion for?
I think so.
Okay.
Okay.
It doesn't sound to me like it requires a motion.
It doesn't? To designate two committee members? Okay. All right.
Okay.
Then I will do that.
Okay, wonderful.
Thank you.
I think it's all good.
Does that, so Superintendent Larson, you're going to set up this meeting then? And then does that need to get in open meeting law and notice for two board members together and stuff, so?
Yep, we'll, yep. I'll meet with Cassandra Thurstonson and see if they're willing to do that. They may decide that on Monday night, and then we'll get the date. We'll just have to see how the city council wants to do it. And then we'll advertise it as a public meeting.
Okay.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good discussion. Okay, next up, we have informational, Director Campbell, Brainerd Public Schools Foundation.
Did not meet since last meeting.
Director Lord?
In your packet is the financial report as of September. And there's nothing really out, but I did want to note that the general fund you'll see was about 13.98% last year. And we're at 12.75. So I did pull a history to try to find out, you know, why are we so far down? And we had a lot of large expenditures in September, the summer prior, so roof projects, deferred maintenance, those kind of things. So that's why that capital, that 500 line is so much higher compared to this year. Food service fund is very comparable. Community service fund is a little bit higher, as noted in the salaries and wages, and then supplies, like we noted last time. All the other ones are very, very comparable to previous years. Are there any questions on the financial report? The enrollment report is also in your packet, and it is, we added the column, the student count as of October 15. So from last month, we did lose approximately 12 students, so 6,901 to 6,889. And I would like to note that at TACTA-SU and at this time last year, November 1, that number is up. So we are, we are, it's looking good. It's looking very positive. And then also, I wanted to note that the adjusted ADM of, for 1718, 6,563.2, that was in the budget revision one. And we did end the year with 6,5, excuse me, we ended the year with 6,563.2, and in the budget was 6,538.1. So we were up 25 kids. So the audit is starting this week. You will see that we did end the year more positive than projected. More details to come on the audit. And I think that was everything I have.
Okay, so just a question on our current student count compared to the preliminary budget. We're up a lot.
So that's ADMs in the preliminary budget, and we're talking just student count.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
So Marcy, the final student count from last year is up, does that mean our financials will change?
Yes. So 25 kids, you know, you always, can, people say $10,000 per child. So 10,000 times 25, it's going to be a positive 250,000.
Okay.
And then also, we had some, you know, budgets under, so it's going to be better than what we were projected.
Yay.
Yeah.
Good news.
Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you, though, for bringing us each month. It's nice to see how high level we're performing.
I think I do have to start calling you Director Lord. It sounds very official, doesn't it?
And, yeah, I mean, the thing should go to Sue. Sue pulls them all, I just throw them on the spreadsheet. So, thanks.
I think one of the things that's really neat to see is that this year, from the first day until now, we've lost 27 students, whereas during this time last year, we had lost 135 children. And so you can tell that our enrollment is really holding nicely this year as compared to the past. The year before was 34, and the year before that was 74 children during the same period of time. So we're ahead of all three of the last years, so we're happy about that.
Wonderful. Okay, next we have our superintendent's report.
All right. Many of the items that have been talked about tonight in great detail. I do want to address a little bit what Chris talked about. Today, we had, I thought, a really informative meeting regarding career and technical education and workforce development. And had some great discussion with members from the Bridges Academy, from the Chamber of Commerce. Director Haglund was there. We also had representatives from the college and Sourcewell to talk about how do we, how do we really do the work that we've been talking about and developing that workforce for the future. of the future? One of the neatest comments, I thought, is we've related it a lot to career and technical education, but really, we're developing the workforce of the future with every child that comes through our district and goes through our college within our community. And so we're really excited to continue our discussions. There's a couple of really big meetings regarding workforce development. One is being held tomorrow, and one is at Sourcewell, I believe it's the 16th in November. And so we're going to meet again at the end of November to, to talk some more about how can we really do this as a united partnership and help to provide the services that we need at the K-12 system, at the college, at CLC, and then also to partner with our business community. And so we're very excited about this opportunity. Also, tomorrow is Project Oversight Team Meeting at 10 o'clock. And then we're going to have the Baxter Traffic Study Meeting at Baxter City Hall at 2:30. And so I appreciate very much the amount of effort that the board put forth today to give us some guidance into which location is our preference. And now we can go into further negotiation and talking with the city and the county and seeing what we can do to, to partner to make this a reality. And one thing that I know that Chris Zimer last week met with Dr. Stelmac, the principal at Baxter Elementary, and that she was really excited about this particular location. And he also met with John Anderson from Forest View to update them on what we were looking, at the potential, what we're looking at. Also, next Monday, there will be a foundation meeting for the Brainerd Public School Foundation. And then, of course, on Tuesday is the election. And so want to remind everyone to, to vote. And we will be ratifying the election at the regular meeting on November 12th at 6:00. And that's my report for tonight.
Thank you. So other than future board meetings, which Superintendent Larson kind of talked about a little bit?
There is one thing I forgot, I'm sorry. If you remember, earlier this year, you had voted to have Roger and Kay Warner come and to look at the structure of our district. And I wanted the board to know that they're, they come tomorrow morning. And so I know many of you have already set up your interview with them, but they're going to be meeting with, on their first interview at 9:30 tomorrow morning. And so for sure, two days in a row, they'll be here. And if there's more need to be here, they'll be here for that as well. So, thank you, and I apologize for interrupting.
So as Superintendent Larson said, we have Election Day next Tuesday, week from tomorrow, a school board meeting and canvassing those election results on the 12th. Another, Superintendent Larson has another lunch with Elaine at Forest View Middle School on the 15th. Thanksgiving break, it's November 22nd and 23rd, the district offices will be closed, and then we have another school board meeting on November 26th. Is there any other business to come before the board? Hearing none, we'll adjourn. Thank you, everyone.